Good evening, everybody. It's 6 o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll start with an invocation led by Councilmember Roberto, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Ryder. Please rise as you're able.
Stir our thoughts and our minds tonight as together we commit to building and strengthening our community. Lift up those who have lost loved ones, homes, and livelihoods as a result of the historic flooding here in Tennessee and our neighbors in other states. We ask that the waters recede quickly and the land be restored, as we ask for comfort and strength for those who are grieving, and for the courage to face the rebuilding of lives, homes, and entire communities. May those working to rescue and rebuild be protected and guided by your light to find those in need. Fill those who are hurt and have lost hope with your strength and healing touch. Grant us wisdom and patience in our deliberations tonight so that our actions may be worthy of your continued blessings. Amen.
Face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, would you please call roll?
Councilwoman Fugit?
Here.
Councilwoman Helsley?
Here.
Councilwoman McKenzie?
Here.
Councilwoman Parker?
Here.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Here.
Councilwoman Roberto?
Here.
Councilwoman Singh?
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Here.
And Councilman Thomas. All members present, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion on the minutes from our last meeting?
Move to approve.
Okay, motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any items from tonight's agenda to be withdrawn? Are there any items to be postponed? Councilmember McKenzie?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to postpone item 10A. I'd like to put that one off for six weeks, which would be the third meeting from today. Don't know that exact date, so if Mr. Johnson can help me with that.
So postpone item 10A for six weeks?
Yes.
Has been made and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to postpone item 10A carries. Are there any items to be, any other items to be postponed? Okay, are there any items requested to be added by motion? Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion made to approve the consent agenda has been made and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, good evening. It's time now for my mayor's report. I want to start by thanking everyone who helped make our national night out celebration a big success. Several of you were able to attend the kickoff event at the Public Safety Complex, and I thought it was a great turnout and a good way to start the evening. And as you know, many of our police officers and firefighters will be going out across the city to meet with neighborhoods who are having events. Because of Hurricane Helene, we decided it would also be a great opportunity to collect donations to the affected communities. So we were thrilled that Second Harvest was able to partner with us and provide a truck to receive donations at the Public Safety Complex. And I was there, I was able to make a donation, and so were many others. It was great for community members to have that opportunity, along with many other places that are accepting contributions and donations. So as Councilmember Roberto said in the invocation, all our hearts go out to those impacted by those devastated by the flooding. And I want to take a special moment to thank the Knoxville police officers, Knoxville firefighters, who have, first of all, taken care of us here at home, and then, second of all, sent rescue teams, swift water recovery teams, emergency management coordinator teams to the, our neighbors in East Tennessee who've been so impacted by this. It's really, really challenging. So they've been deploying people since the storms and flooding happened. I also want to thank our public service teams. We had a big storm here, but our impacts were very minor by comparison, but we did have people, a lot of trees down, branches down, power lines down. And so I want to thank our public service crews, our KUB crews, for responding to that in such a timely manner. KEMA, excuse me, KEMA has been convened since Thursday. The Emergency Operations Center has been, first, a good resource at making sure that everything's safe here, but then also sending mutual aid, as we always do. And I learned from Chief Sharp that mutual aid now is being, will be further coordinated by FEMA, because they know that mutual aid by nearby areas, you know, we might need to make sure we have, you know, our people here at home to deal with future storms that are projected. So there's some people being flown in from Nevada and other places that, you know, aren't going through flooding right now. They have their issues with fire, wildfires, and so forth. So anyhow, it's going to be a marathon, not a sprint, as we think of our neighbors, as we move from rescue operations to long-term recovery. So I know that we will do whatever we can to help our neighbors. So thank you for, councilmembers, for your support and energy on this, and we will keep an eye on how other ways we can help. On a happier note, I want to take a moment to thank Friendship Force for helping to bring a delegation of Polish mayors to our city. This group has been in town since last Friday. I've had a chance to greet them at the airport, which was very fun, and a former ambassador to Poland, and our former mayor Victor Ash and his wife Joan hosted, had them over to his home for a reception. And it was, it's been wonderful to have them in town, learn about their communities, learn about their country, and not surprisingly, we have a lot in common. So if you could please raise your hand and, or stand and be recognized for our Polish delegation. Thank you, and we're so glad to have you and learn from you, and perhaps one day we'll be able to come visit you in your homes as well. Thank you. Just a quick reminder about our rules of decorum. Those who wish to speak either to a specific agenda item or during public forums should sign up with the City Recorder before 4:00 p.m. Please do not use profanity, and when speaking to a specific agenda items, please remember to stay on topic. Robert's Rules of Order state that remarks must be germane to the question ahead of the assembly, that is, statements must have bearing on whether the pending motion should be adopted. Those who fail to adhere to these rules may be ruled out of order and asked to step away from the podium. For those who are listening, please note, you may not disrupt a public meeting from the audience; those who do may be asked to leave. Thank you in advance for everyone's respect for these rules. And that is all for my mayor's report. Are there any reports of councilmembers or committee? Councilmember Singh? Councilmember Singh, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to just, today is the first day of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. There was an event at the Family Justice Center, and it was nice to see how many different agencies were working on this issue. I think all the councilmembers got an email with some of the gun homicide statistics, but I wanted to add to that some. Up till September 1st of this year, there were 19 homicides, gun homicides, in Knoxville. It's one of the first few times that the number of white gun homicide victims was higher than black gun homicide victims, which, I hate that, but it seems like what we're doing might be working some, and that feels very good. But of the 19 folks that have been murdered, seven of them were domestic violence-related. That's more than a third. So it's something that, it's very serious. I think we oftentimes make light of it, it's just a couple fighting, but if you see something, I was talking to a principal today, and she said what disturbs her the most was that there was a domestic incident going on at a high school, and everybody was just, all the other students were just walking by, like, that's not my business, I'm not going to do anything about this, that we've gotten used to so much violence. So that's what I'd like us to keep some awareness about. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McKenzie?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to invite my colleagues on council and the general public to a six district community meeting that will be held this Thursday, October 3rd, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Honey Rock Church, their event center. It's located at 4113 Holston Drive. Please come out. We're going to have a community and East Knoxville project updates, information and updates from Park, on how to contact them. We're going to have KPD, the East Command District folks will be there, NAACP will be there to talk about the charter review, we'll have voter information, and just open forums, so everyone is invited to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights on, we'll move on to item 8A.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That was my bad.
No.
Vice Mayor Smith? I just want to say that we had similar forum in South Knoxville last night, and had a good turnout at Roundup Restaurant, and had a very good discussion with first district residents and some guests as well. So I hope Councilwoman McKenzie's event is filled as well. And secondly, just wanted to offer a happy birthday to Councilwoman Helsley, who will celebrate her birthday in, I don't know, 12 days-ish? Yeah.
Start now.
Happy birthday.
Any other reports from council? Seeing none, let's move on to item 8A, please.
8A is a resolution confirming the reappointment of Leslie Henderson and Matt Taglass, and appointment of Adam Kontop to the Board of Environmental Appeals for the City of Knoxville.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
9A is an ordinance to amend the operating and capital budgets for fiscal year 2024,
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries 8-1.
9B is an ordinance to close an unimproved and unnamed alley from former McCarty Avenue to Baldwin Avenue within City Block 25373, and authorizing the mayor to execute quitclaim deeds to the adjacent property owner's first district.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
9C is an ordinance to close unimproved Dooley Street from former McCarty Avenue to Baldwin Avenue within City Block 25373, and authorizing the mayor to execute quitclaim deeds to the adjacent property owner's first district.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11A is a resolution requesting Knoxville's Community Development Corporation to create a redevelopment plan for an area to be titled "The Magnolia Avenue Corridor Redevelopment Plan."
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, I know you're very aware of this. I'm excited about our plans to continue to help revitalize and support the East Knoxville side of town. There's RJ Justice is here, if you have any questions, and Ben Bentley is here as well. Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, just words of encouragement. I really appreciate all the work that's going on behind this, and the language of encourage revitalization and reuse of vacant and blighted areas is what we need to be doing more of, and it's good to see us getting more traction on that. And I hope this is a big success, and that we can use it as a model for other areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Could, we have an explanation of this process for the public. I saw that there's a public hearing involved.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll have Ms. Justice explain that. Is your microphone not working? Okay.
You ain't hooked up at all.
Ben Bentley might beat you to the punch then, yeah. RJ, if you want to go down to the podium, you can do that, if the microphone, oh. What's the problem?
There was a power down. You're also looking on the user.
Okay.
We can just talk to each other right here.
Okay. RJ, go ahead.
Okay. We're all just going to pass this one mic around all night. I will ask Ben to jump in here, but overall, this is a consistent process where we, council brings forward a request to study an area and identify objectives to be included in a redevelopment plan. Like Councilman Thomas said, you know, alleviating blight, increasing housing, improving infrastructure, those are often some of similar objectives that are stated in a redevelopment plan. So we request that KCDC study this area, help us create a list of objectives, and define an area. We also have send notification to all properties that are in that area, and then there is a public hearing held, so people can ask questions, read through the objectives, and there's just, it's available for comment. After that, that plan will come back to council for a final approval.
You got a trade.
Councilmember Parker, did that answer your question?
Thanks. Based on experience with the last redevelopment plan that came forward, that was for a small redevelopment project, how are we, when we're talking about notifying residents in the area, how wide of an area are we talking about for the Magnolia Avenue redevelopment plan?
No, the microphone's not on. Now it is. Okay.
It is on.
Yes.
Hello, all right. Ben Bentley, 901 North Broadway. So, under state law, we are required to publish three consecutive weeks in the Knox News Sentinel, as well as our website, and have a copy of a draft plan available to the public. We will also send individual mailers to the address on record. We can't ensure that if someone hasn't kept their address up to date, that we get it to the right space, but we'll make sure that every parcel owner in the Magnolia redevelopment area will receive a mail-out notifying them of the public hearing. And then, after the three-week publication in the Knox News Sentinel, as well as those mailers being sent out, we will hold the public hearing and hear comments from the public based on the draft plan that's in place.
I will answer another part of your question. What is the area? What is the limits of the area? And we shared a map at the council dinner of a potential delineation of the area, and it's focused along the corridor, extending from the Burlington-Chilhauie area back to the Old City area, and it focuses on the commercial zone area, so really kind of the first block along Magnolia Avenue corridor.
And when we say revitalization, and we want to see, you know, a thriving business district, and we want to see, you know, new amenities that are coming in, that are available to the community, but we also want to respond to kind of current conditions, and what current community members are experiencing. And what I continue to hear, you know, from community members is struggling with the increase of cost, whether it's housing cost, or we're talking about inflation, or all of those things. So when we're talking about revitalization, are we also talking about some form of stabilization considering these new factors?
So I think the tools that would be put in place here would support any type of project that came forward, but I think the folks that own property in that area right now, and I'm speaking a little bit on behalf of the city, but there's always a prioritization of working with existing property owners through anything that we're doing currently, to make sure that if there's a chance for them to create a business in a space that they currently own, or to grow a business in a space that's already there, that's what we're looking to first and foremost. Secondary to that, and I know we've talked to council about this in the past, I think Councilwoman Fugit has rightly been all over this subject, we need to be going out, and for folks that either have no interest in doing anything with their underutilized property, or it's remaining blighted, I think there's a second step to that, which, in that case, might mean us being a little more heavy-handed in trying to encourage that owner to sell the property or to do something with it. One thing that I know we're going to focus on is housing on that transit corridor, because there are a lot of, either small parcels that are, could be grouped together to create housing opportunities, hopefully affordable housing and workforce housing opportunities, but there are some large parcels that would make perfect sense for that.
And so far, the projects, the housing projects that have come before council on Magnolia are not affordable for people who currently live in the area. It would be, you know, these young professionals that Knoxville is building housing for, who don't work along the Magnolia Avenue corridor. So we need, you know, we need businesses, thriving businesses along the corridor, and also, we need to keep in mind who's going to work at those businesses, who's going to patron those businesses, and not create a plan that's going to push folks out of that area. That's what I'm worried about. And I don't know how to put any sort of direction or constraints on KCDC that moves us in the right direction, rather than what we've seen just in the last two years from KCDC, when it comes to the Magnolia Avenue corridor.
Okay, what, and what would that be? I'm sorry, I'm not familiar.
Well, just the workforce housing, quote unquote. The level of rent that folks were expecting to get from, you know, those units, is above what folks in that area can afford. So those are obviously going to be targeting, you know, community members outside of that community, and we want, you know, healthy, mixed-income communities, but we don't want our focus to remain on this higher-income part of our community, and everyone else is left to suffer. And new developments aren't catering to them, you know, we're hoping that folks that are currently in what we might consider affordable housing are going to move into this nicer housing and free up this other housing. I don't think that's a specific enough plan, a redevelopment plan, that includes our current neighbors.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. I will just say that our housing plan is to address affordable housing. Today, we just celebrated the preservation of almost 300 units of very affordable housing, Westview Towers, and I think it's important that we have affordable housing options in all parts of the city, not just in concentrated parts of the city. I'm also really proud of the city's gap financing efforts of housing at Ammons and Holston, I can't remember the names of all of them, but we've supported a lot of affordable housing efforts in East Knoxville. And this redevelopment plan can do that, too. Again, it's just an opportunity for us to add more tools to property development. We can't force people to do things, it's more carrots than sticks, but as you know, from our development priorities, the creation of more affordable mixed-use developments, mixed income, and also affordable, just pure affordable, along corridors especially, is what the city has prioritized. So I think this can be consistent with that. And again, there'll be a public hearing, and then also, there'll be an opportunity for council to review this before it becomes established. Councilmember McKenzie?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ben, for that update. Personally, I'm very excited about this redevelopment plan, to see what will be offered up. Those of us who've been in Knoxville all of our lives and grown up in East Knoxville, I mean, remember when Magnolia was absolutely a thriving corridor, if you will, street, if you will, that did provide jobs, a lot of fast food restaurants and other amenities that were there. As it relates to the public hearing, definitely like to work together with you on that, to make sure that we are utilizing multiple means of communication to the community, such as community calendar on WJB and some other thoughts, so look forward to working with you on that. And again, just seeing what we're going to have to offer, I agree that we cannot just concentrate, you know, affordable housing in one area, so I do appreciate the concerted effort, because not everyone who grew up in East Knoxville wants to continue to live in East Knoxville. People do want to go and live in other areas where they can afford to live, and so appreciate the intentionality around that. Thank you.
Councilmember Thomas?
Some statements made was really encouraging, and I really liked the approach of being proactive in contacting and reaching out to property owners who have blighted property or property that's underutilized, and just engaging them, and see what opportunities are there. As the mayor said, you know, most of it would be a carrot. We can't really make most property owners do anything, but just find out why this property is just being not used properly. And the more we can do that, I think that would help, because there's a lot of it out there, and that shows us what kind of options we do have. And in line with councilperson's, Parker's concerns, you know, I don't see that as being in any way in conflict with that. It's just, let's get some of this property that's not being used and be proactive, and in a dialogue with these property owners, and see what we can do to make them do something else, or encourage them to do something else with that property.
Councilmember Fugit?
Thank you. I would just add on to that, that most people who own property want to use it to its highest and best use. They will be encouraged by the fact that there is a plan, and that there are going to be tools available to make it where it is more desirable to invest, because there will be an economic mass that is also coming around to help support it. Doing a one-off development in an area that isn't, that doesn't have a plan is harder, and it's more financially risky. So the reason the redevelopment plan, I believe, is so important is because, and the reason I say we actually need to reach out to people and let them know that's been put in place, because if they don't know that it's been put in place, and that there will be new tools, and a bigger plan that will re-energize more than just their property, I think that's what will incentivize and encourage people to reinvest themselves. So I think that's the biggest thing a redevelopment plan offers private property owners.
Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. What I'm trying to communicate is I wish that we, as a council, were giving more direction about what type of developments we hope to see, and a real commitment to that mixed income. There are going to be, I don't know what properties are along that corridor. The affordable housing projects just named are not within that corridor. The, you know, once the stadium comes in, the impact that it's going to have on the Magnolia corridor, it already has had a major impact. It's already had an impact on affordability. I would like for us to be able to give some sort of guidance that says, you know, we need a 40/60, or we need a, you know, based on population, we need to ensure we have tools and incentives that encourage this, you know? That's all I'm saying. The other thing I did want to highlight are the tools. Will this open up new funding opportunities for local businesses?
So the main tools that are available through this would be the use of tax increment finance for the development or the rehab of an existing building, or the creation of a new building. The second piece, there are certain grants that are available, both under state law and from time to time under the federal government. So a good example, recently, we were notified of a Brownfield redevelopment area grant, BRAG, and it's a $500,000 grant to do environmental remediation of an existing building. So we're working on the sanitary laundry building on that grant opportunity that will be, I guess it was just announced, but will be announced soon. So there are other spot funding opportunities that are really going to help existing owners, and KCDC and the city can work side by side with those owners to pursue some of these opportunities, as we're doing it, sanitary laundry.
I think that's the important piece. For these redevelopment plans, are these opportunities that it opens up? You know, one, I have limited time, so I also wanted to ask about the Magnolia You know, I have limited time, so I also wanted to ask about the Magnolia Avenue apartments, and what is happening with that project?
So which one, I'm sorry?
The, it's the two tall apartment buildings near the McDonald's on Magnolia Avenue.
The historic buildings.
Park City Apartments.
Is it the Jeffrey Nash developments?
The one that has, that we approved an incentive for. That project is under construction right now, and it is, Jeffrey is, Jeffrey Nash is moving forward with the development of that project as it was proposed to council.
Okay. Just want, it seemed to be taking longer than I expected, so I was curious of an update. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11B is a resolution to add the honorary name Barbara Kelly Legacy to Major Avenue at its intersection with Western Avenue.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, just wanted to, I know you all know that Barbara Kelly's been a driving force in our community and a leader of the CAC for nearly 60 years. So I appreciate the people who put this concept forward, and I wanted to let you know if you have any questions, there are some folks here from CAC here, if you have any questions. The vote on this has to be unanimous for it to be approved because it's a naming thing. That's council's role.
The person's living.
Oh, and because the person's alive. Mostly, we name people, we don't, this is very unusual, but I think if anybody deserves it, you know, I agree that Barbara Kelly is very much deserving of this honor, but because it's not, we have to be unanimous, let's just put it that way. Okay, does anybody have any questions or discussion? Lauren Ryder, Councilmember Ryder.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on that because I wrote the ordinance that included that, naming things after living individuals. Many cities defer to not naming things after living individuals, and we had some problematic or questionable applications from people, we actually had some individuals that hadn't had a chance to even do many things with their lives, like an infant. So we basically looked at other ordinances across the country in other cities and standards, and so that was a pretty standard thing. So I just wanted to clarify, based on the not remembering, because we haven't had that many of those, the ordinance adopted that particular change in 2020, and it was back when we were Hollywood Squares in the Zoom land. So I know folks may not remember all of that, but anyway, I just wanted to clarify that. And if at any point anyone just wants to modify that or change that, I have not been public property naming chair for a while, so you can deem to do that. So anyway, that's all, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
It's based on best practices elsewhere. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Fugit.
Thank you. Not to belabor this, but I'm going to, I think that's a really good idea with living people. We have seen many examples where perhaps, after the totality of someone's life, you actually understand everything about them. There are places who've had to unnamed things. That's why, I mean, it's a fact, and that's why it is best practice to say we need to all be unanimous on it, which I feel certain we will.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Oh, Councilmember Parker, sorry.
Well, just to clarify, it's not unprecedented in Knoxville, right? We have named, we have streets named after living people.
We do, and some of those are state routes, though, or things that, you know, so some of those things, even, for example, I believe, you know, the Reverend Middlebrook Jackson Avenue ramp, who, I mean, I would have, you know, he's a very highly esteemed person and friend of the city and friend of mine, but I believe that was a state ramp because it was a renovation. So some of the things that you see named are city, but some of them are state.
Yeah, one I was thinking of was for the Otis Robinson, I think it's off MLK, Little Tiny Street.
I think that's a campus thing. I couldn't say off the top of my head. Mr. Frost?
Thank you, Mayor. When the city started naming streets, for example, there wasn't a system in place. It was purely decided by who was the mayor at the time. And then Councilman Joe Bailey started the Public Property Naming Committee, which created a process. I mean, for example, at Charles Drive, it was done by Vice Mayor Ash, I mean, Mayor Ash. So that was before the Public Property Naming Committee.
Any other questions or comments? Well, I just wanted to take a moment to thank all the councilmembers who have served or currently serving on the Public Property Naming Committee. It's important work. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay.
11C is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Whaley Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $8,930,463.40 for the Severe Avenue Streetscapes Project.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, the next several items, C through F, will help see through the long planned Severe Avenue improvements. It will include wide ADA compliant sidewalks, a new railroad crossing, streetlights, upgraded utilities, and a roundabout at the intersection of Severe Avenue, Foggy Bottom Street, and Island Home Avenue. If approved, construction would begin by January 2025 and be completed, I hesitate to say, but it's written here in my notes, would be completed by summer 2026. Traffic flow on Severe Avenue is expected to remain open in both directions throughout the construction. And this is already all budgeted as well, with big chunks of it funded through TDOT grants. Any questions or discussion? Vice Mayor Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to compliment the Mr. Claybo and your team being persistent at this. I know we've been through lots of many shapes of this project, so thank you. I'm excited to see this 20-year idea come to life, and that's when it was envisioned, it was 20 years ago. So sometimes it takes a while, but we actually have merchants over there and residents that have been there a long time, but new merchants arrive every year. In fact, it's much like the Cumberland Avenue Streetscape Project and the Magnolia Avenue corridor. So we just approved the plan for Magnolia Avenue. Sometimes the streetscapes come before the businesses, and sometimes the businesses, for example, come before the streetscape. So I think it's very similar to that in terms of the investment that Mayor O'Hara's administration made. We're now making the same one in Severe Avenue. I just want to pass along two things, in addition to the mayor's comments, that, you know, given the nature of, the length of the project and the importance of those businesses staying thriving and alive, that, you know, I know that the mayor is committed to continuous updates to that neighborhood. The Merchants Association is very active, so proactively commend you for, you know, constant communication around that. And particularly, the second piece is asked to think about parking of construction vehicles. That neighborhood over there's been through a lot of construction, which is good, but making sure that those vehicles aren't too disruptive of the neighborhood is just an item I'd like to pass along from a resident. So thank you for your persistence, and I'm excited.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker.
Thank you, Mayor. I missed the last piece of what Vice Mayor Smith said. It might overlap a little bit, but I've received questions from the neighborhood about what should they anticipate in terms of logistics with the bridge being closed and with this project happening? And as this work moves forward, can we keep the construction trucks out of, out of the neighborhoods, essentially?
That was my comment as well.
Yeah, that is, yeah, obviously, a lot of people are concerned about that, and what I can say is that we will be in constant communication, and we will do our best to facilitate the flow of vehicles and parking of construction vehicles in the least disruptive manner possible. We have had to do projects like this in busy areas in the past, and we've learned from that, that good communication is helpful, even when the communication is like, there's going to be some inconveniences, but letting people know in advance and doing our best to accommodate the retail and residential flow. Mr. Claybo, do you have anything to add?
We will work with the contractor. As far as the project and how it's going to flow, the, there's about 32 feet of pavement curb to curb now, so there'll be a lane maintained in each direction, and the work will be in one side of the street at a time as we move from west to east. So we should be able to try to maintain that traffic moving, but I will, I took note about construction vehicles, and we'll work with the contractor on that.
And I would add to that, in addition to congestion, what I'm mostly hearing about is concern of damage to the roads. So if we could monitor the impact of truck activity on, you know, neighborhood roads, if they have to go into the neighborhoods, and make a commitment to, you know, stand on top of them so they clean up after themselves, we don't leave torn up roads in the neighborhoods after we've just fixed Severe Avenue, those are, those are the concerns. There are apparently still damaged roads from the construction of the apartments on the water. That's the concern.
Okay, we hear, and we will do our best to prevent that from happening. Any other questions or comments, Mr. Thomas? Oh, Mr. Thomas and Ms. Helsley.
I was just going to say, and don't forget the merchants down there when the traffic gets iffy, just plow on down there and keep them in business because they've been through a lot, and it's going to take a while, so. Thank you.
And I know, I'll just say, of course, we're working hard. You just approved on second reading money to move forward with evaluation and design for, you know, fixing and hopefully reopening Gay Street Bridge. I mean, timeline for the, yeah, it's not going to happen right away, but, you know, we understand that that will impact businesses as well. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, Mr. Claybo, just on the subject of roundabouts, is this something that engineering is looking toward building more of, or was it more or less just that this particular project lent itself well to a roundabout?
I think too, I think this project did lend itself well. That intersection was kind of skewed and really odd, so this will really clean up that and help with conflict points. But roundabouts are proven to be safer, reduce conflict points, so we're always looking for opportunities to introduce those.
Okay, thank you.
I think they have a lot of roundabouts in Poland, so maybe we can learn from our Polish land use folks about safe traffic flow. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11D is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with CDM Smith Incorporated to provide construction, engineering, and inspection services for the Severe Avenue Streetscapes Project in an amount not to exceed $980,734.75.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11E is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Southern Constructors Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $5,270,470 for the Severe Avenue Utility Conduit and Duct Bank Project.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries eight one.
11F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a revised memorandum of understanding with the Knoxville Utilities Board to reimburse KUB for all expenses related to the electric construction work for the Severe Avenue Streetscapes Project at an additional estimated cost of $1,189,656.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, oh, Councilmember Ryder.
Yeah, I just have a question for Mr. Claybo. When do we decide when we're going to do underground utilities versus when we don't? Like, was this part of the original visioning plan in 2006? Like, how did that?
Yes, so this corridor was part of the original vision plan for South Knoxville, and actually, the Form-based Code requires underground utilities with redevelopment, but also encourages that with city projects as well. So this decision was made in order to make this project fit with the Form-based Code.
Okay. I just, I'm asking because I know I'm going to get asked. When the Central Streetscapes was done, the community wanted underground utilities, and that didn't happen. So is it because of the Form-based Code that that was kind of attached to this project?
For this particular project, yes.
Okay. And then the other one, there's just, I mean, we were, as a community, we were told it just wasn't affordable, and we couldn't have underground utilities.
And that, for Central, that was a cost issue.
Okay.
I believe, did we bury the utility on the Magnolia Avenue Streetscape? I think we did. That was before.
The only overhead utilities on Magnolia were the streetlights, and those were put underground. The rest are on alleys or side streets.
Okay.
They were like that going into the project?
They were, yes.
Okay, okay, all right.
Any other questions or discussion? Councilmember Parker?
The agenda item we are currently discussing deals with the Streetscapes improvements, but not with the utility improvements, correct?
11F is electric construction work for Severe Avenue Streetscape Project.
So this is a reimbursement to KUB. KUB is going to self-perform moving their electrical wires overhead to underground.
Okay, so it is a part of the, I guess.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And I just want to thank KUB for agreeing to self-perform that. That saved the city over a million dollars compared to someone else doing it. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries eight one.
11G is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Butler Appraisal Group LLC in an amount not to exceed $41,500 to provide right-of-way appraisal services for the Woodland Avenue Complete Street Paving Project, excuse me.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11H is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed to Philip Chesney for one parcel of property located at 205 Spruce Street, parcel ID number 082OF008, within the limits of the City of Knoxville pursuant to the Homemakers Program for a contract sales price of $50,500.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11I is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Perez Planning and Design LLC to provide professional design services to develop a Parks and Recreation Systems master plan for an amount not to exceed $250,000.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Director Cheryl Ely is here, if you have any questions. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11J is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Knoxville Knox County Plan, Knoxville Knox County Community Action Committee in an amount not to exceed $138,000 to provide adult education, health, social services, and recreation programs in the John T. O'Connor Senior Center, Senior Citizen Center.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, oh, Councilmember Ryder.
Sneaking in there, sitting in the way back here.
I was going to add, look at this, this has it, too.
I don't know, Ms. Ely, are you the only one here to answer for the O'Connor Center, or is there just you? Okay, I hate to put you on the hot spot, but may I? So sorry. So, so this is for programming, and they have talks that come, they have people come out and speak to the people who come, seniors and other people that come to the seniors' center? Okay. I think, I just wanted to raise publicly because I got a lot of questions. They had, do you know how the programming is chosen? Is it by individuals that work there at the O'Connor Center? Are there any standards or anything for what they choose? Does anybody know? Do you, Councilwoman McKenzie?
Certainly. So I do know that they do surveys.
Okay.
And so what the seniors say that they're interested on, what they would like to participate in, are taken into consideration with the programming. So I do know that much.
Okay, all right. They just had one questionable program about ivermectin one time, and it got canceled, but it raised a big upset with some folks in the community, particularly scientists. And so I just would hope that there's a little bit of vetting or some standards for what they do for programming. So that's all, seeing as the city is funding it. So, sorry not to.
Ms. Ely, if you could, you know, just follow up with CAC and just ask them what their policies are. Maybe they have good policies, and this one just fell through the cracks. But I know, I do appreciate that as soon as community members express those concerns, the lecture was removed or what, you know.
Yeah, and I would just say with a topic like that, I understand that there might be people who have questions with it or are interested in that topic, but to make sure that we have somebody to answer both sides of the coin and to answer with factual information so that, you know, it's evidence-based. So that's all.
And we don't have to provide a venue for people who are just not credible, and, you know, so anyhow. We haven't even had the chance, Ms. Ely, go ahead. If you could say your name and address, or name and what your job is.
Cheryl Ely, Director of Parks and Recreation. Thank you all very much. Good to see everyone. The CAC right now, or the John T. O'Connor Center, is just now hiring a new manager, program manager. So we are meeting with her probably in the next couple of weeks, and that's something that I can express to her as well as her supervisor. But we are working with them, and we'll be working, and she's still learning, will learn her job. So there may be a couple little hiccups along the way, but she is absolutely new, and so we'll work through and kind of give her the information that you all have provided for us.
Thanks.
Welcome.
And thank you for being in the dunk tank at National Night Out. That was very good sporty of you.
Always a wonderful partner.
Councilmember Fugit.
Thank you. I just want to say that, you know, that's one program out of how many they do. It is a fabulous organization. They do wonderful work for our seniors. So I don't want the community to get a feeling that there's questionable stuff going on there. I appreciate Councilwoman Rider's question, but I also want everybody to know that's one in however many CAC typically does. So if you can share that with them too, I'd appreciate it.
Definitely will, yes ma'am.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11K is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Ace Miller Golden Gloves Charities Incorporated to provide an amateur boxing program for an amount not to exceed $75,000.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Councilmember McKenzie.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have any representatives here from Golden Gloves today?
Anyone here from Golden Gloves?
Okay, I was just going to have them talk a little bit about some of the programs they have. And they have a young lady that was there at Big John Tate's honorary street naming, who is actually training, she was training for some huge boxing events across the state and potentially going outside of the state. So I was just going to get an update, but I'll reach out to them and let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11L is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Child Help Incorporated to provide funding in an amount not to exceed $125,000 from the Police Department's annual budget to support services and assist the needs of children who have experienced complex trauma through abuse, neglect, psychological harm, and exposure to crimes.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11M is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to apply jointly with Knox County for the 2024 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Award of $136,946 from the U.S. Department of Justice to enhance law enforcement functions through purchase of equipment, supplies, and technology upgrades, as well as provide enhanced law enforcement training for the Knoxville Police Department. And if such application is approved, authorizing the mayor to accept such a grant award.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11N is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Utility Arborist of Tennessee LLC to install trees at various locations throughout the city during the 2024-2025 tree planting season in an amount not to exceed $35,000.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, items N, O, and P are all about improving our city's tree canopy, and these contracts align with our goals of our Urban Forest Master Plan in all. 1,200 trees in total will be planted in the 24-25 planting season, and these plantings will address the main goals of our Urban Forest Master Plan, which is more trees, better trees, and trees for all. And in addition to the many benefits of trees, they are wonderful stormwater abatement mitigation investments. So very grateful for this program. Casey Kraus is here if you have any questions. Are there any questions or comments? If council wants to combine those, that's fine with me. That's up to council, or we?
Is there an objection?
Okay, without objection, then the motion on the floor is to approve items N, O, and P. Okay, okay, that's, okay. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11Q is a resolution, 11Q is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to apply for, and if awarded, accept a Connected Communities 2.0 Grant from the Department of Energy in an amount not to exceed $5,600,000 with a local match of in-kind staff time to create technology innovations that support increased energy efficiency for homes, commercial buildings, and an electric system that is flexible and resilient.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing, oh, Councilmember Rider.
Is this similar to some of the other energy efficiency programs we've done in the past?
Dawn Michelle Foster is here to answer any questions. Ms. Foster.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Dawn Michelle Foster, Deputy Director in Office of Sustainability. This Connected Communities 2.0 Grant is established by the Department of Energy. So what we'll be doing, we'll be working with the team, the Integrative Building Deployment and Analysis Group, a DOE, to look at our city facilities in regards to making them more energy efficient.
Okay, so it'll be specific to actual government buildings?
Yeah, this is, well, we're going to look at other city facilities. We actually did a tour with the team to look at two far halls, parking wrecks departments, and other city facilities. So we haven't selected a specific building or any specific buildings yet, but that's part of the task and part of their scope of work.
Okay, and will we be able to complete any of the work with it, the funding?
So what they're going to do, they're going to do an assessment. So part of this $5.6 million is to implement some of their innovative tools, technologies like smart controls, looking at retrofitting the city facilities, maybe doing a better thermal envelope to make it more energy efficient. Sometimes this room gets very cold. This may not be one of the rooms that we look at, but, you know, we could all sit in here in blankets sometimes. But we can look at other city facilities. We had a chance to visit the far halls, and they noticed some of the technological disadvantages they're going through right now that they can improve. So it's more about being more energy efficient.
Thank you. Look forward to seeing what they come up with.
Sure, thanks.
Hopefully, we get the grant.
Hope so.
Any other, Councilmember Helsley? No? Okay. Seeing no further questions, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Foster.
12A is an ordinance to close a portion of Ford Place from its northeast corner, parcel number 095OE032, to its northern terminus adjacent to City Block 260063, and authorizing the mayor to execute quitclaim deeds to the adjacent property owner's first district.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, council members, no one has signed up for public forums, so without objection, this meeting is adjourned.